Afternoon. I will call to order the August the 8th, 2024 work session meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the June 13th, 2024 work session minutes? If I can have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Are we still waiting on someone?
All right, the minutes have passed. I'll turn it over for our GM/CEO report. Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you Chair Powers. Good afternoon, everyone. Just a few items for me on the agenda. First off is the APTA 2024 Outstanding Public Transportation System Award. With a lot of pride, I'm here to tell you that MARTA was voted as the Transit System Agency of the Year for 2024. For big transit systems, that's for those with over 50 million riders per year. So I'm trying to contain myself, but ear to ear, we're very, very proud of this. The award recognizes public transportation professionals in North America who demonstrate leadership, excellence, and innovation. The nominations cover a three-year period, and they're evaluated based on 25% qualitative, verifiable data from the NTD National Transit Database, and 75% qualitative analysis in their waiting system. They looked at things like our past COVID performance right through to our massive capital expansion. They talked about our award-winning programs in almost every key area of the agency, including safety, security, and MPD, marketing, communication, sustainability, infrastructure development, technology and innovation, equity, access, mobility, customer service, community engagement, economic development for the region, financial management, and workforce development. Thirteen pages in all of the things that they looked at and considered in talking about the, you know, the progress, the plans, and the passion that MARTA demonstrates for the people of this great region. So the award really belongs to the employees here at MARTA. They're very authentic in their desire to do more and be more for our customers. The award belongs to you, the board, for your leadership, for your guidance and support as we navigate our bold and inclusive vision for today and tomorrow. And the award inspires next-level effort and achievement. So watch this space, as I like to say, in terms of how it invigorates MARTA and takes us to the next level as the years go on. So we're really grateful for APTA for the recognition. The award will be presented at the annual APTA Transform Conference in Anaheim next month on September 30th. Thanks again for that award. Next up, I want to talk about some good progress we've had with capital projects in the federal pipeline. So Thursday of last week, so just a week ago, August 1st, we submitted the travel forecast reports and the ridership reports for the models for the MARTA Rapid on Campbellton and for the MARTA Rapid and Clayton South Lake. So both submitted successfully. We also submitted the updated National Environmental Policy Act checklists. That's the NEPA checklist for both projects. And this kicks off our environmental compliance process for both projects into high gear. So we're now working to finalize the CIG applications for the Small Starts Grant Program late in August. Also, on Monday, just gone by, August 5th, we submitted a consolidated NEPA checklist for the Safe Routes to Transit Program. If you'll remember, that's the program that adds infrastructure components at and around bus stops and rail stations to make safer connections for pedestrians using the system. We appreciate the teamwork with our jurisdictional partners, as well as the FTA Region 4, our counterparts there for some very innovative approaches to hitting these milestones. Not the least of which is the consolidated NEPA checklists for the Safe Routes to Transit. Instead of going project by project, just putting them in bands that are equal and approving them in wider swaths. So we're very confident that we have submitted a nationally competitive set of projects for these grant funds, and we stand ready to receive good news next year. And finally, there's some pictures that I'd like to show on the screen. This is really, you know, we talk about the highs of the transit system in the year. Now let's talk about the depths to which MARTA will go. Had to do something there. But this is an update on our environmentally sustainable efforts off the Georgia coast. You'll remember that some seven months ago, we came to you to say we were going to deploy these two rail cars that had retired, passed their useful life. And we were going to put them some 23 nautical miles off the coast of Osobo Island, and they were going to be submerged in about 60 feet of water. And so we did it. Seven months later, here's the report. You can see on the side of the car some soft algae already taking form on the substrate. And there are nine different species of fish already counted in that environment making use. Next photo, please. Making use of these building blocks that are really necessary for sustainable environmental development in our ocean. So next slide, I want to thank Cameron Britton, the Marine biologist with the Department of Natural Resources, for these images, and just commit to you that we will continue to update you as this takes shape. So that's it for the images, I believe. And with that, I will go back to the upcoming meetings. And so we do have a number of meetings that are already in your packets, committee meetings and board meetings. And on top of that, we've got the Riders Advisory Council, which will be held in person or virtual. So in person here in the atrium on September 4th from 6:30 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. We also have the MARTA Accessibility Committee, which is virtual on September 10th from 10:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. And then we have the APTA Transform Conference, which is in person in Anaheim, Sunday, September 29th. With that, Chair Powers, I'll return it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. I know we have all expressed, but I think it's important to say how important and how well-deserved the recognition this award is for you, your team, and everyone here at MARTA. So I think that's worth another round of applause. Mr. Andrews, are there any matters for executive session?
Yes, ma'am. We have, I think, two litigation matters for you.
May I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of...
Chair Powers, excuse me. I have one more congratulatory item.
Sure.
Earlier this week, the ATL Airport CID has announced the selection of the ATN Automated Transit Network Demo Pilot, in which MARTA is a significant partner. And so they ordered that to glide away. So that project is, we've been working with them for a couple of years, so that one's moving forward. So that's also another item to congratulate the staff on as well. So great job, guys.
It's great news as well. All right, may I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of litigation? Ms. Hartridge is the second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, we will move into executive session.
Good afternoon, and I will call to order the August 8, 2024 Board of Directors Meeting. Mr. Andrews, do we have any public comments first or via email or voicemail?
In person.
Nothing via email or voicemail.
All right. Now, we will receive in the public comments for the folks who are here in person. Just as a reminder, the public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. It is limited to two minutes a person. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed forty-five minutes. If forty-five minute time limit is reached before public comments are completed, public comments will be suspended and the board meeting will commence. Public comments will resume at the end of the board meeting. We'll take these in the order in which they were received. Mr. Dunham's.
Pass.
Pass. All right. Mr. David Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. That's an attendance. Good afternoon, MARTA Board of Directors. I want to give thanks to our men and women and members of our Amalgamated Transit Union who perform loyal and safe and efficient skilled labor every day. One of the complaints that I wanted to bring towards the MARTA Board of Directors is disregard for current provisions that were negotiated last summer in the CBA, specifically speaking to paragraphs thirty-five, one sixteen, and one seventeen. These are financial issues that impact wages of our members within MARTA, and we just have a blatant disregard for those provisions that we have collectively bargained. And also, safety. We continue to have employees here at MARTA attacked on the buses, on the trains, and the stations. We have to do something to get a handle on that. We have attempted to get some resiliency in that area, and we haven't reached it. Also, there has been a narrative in the communities about attendance of our workers here at MARTA. We are here today to refute that.
Good afternoon. I will call to order the August 8, 2024 Board of Directors meeting. Mr. Andrews, do we have any public comments first or via email or voicemail?
In person. Nothing via email or voicemail.
All right. Now, we will receive the public comments for the folks who are here in person. Just as a reminder, the public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. It is limited to two minutes a person. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed forty-five minutes. If forty-five minute time limit is reached before public comments are completed, public comments will be suspended and the board meeting will commence. Public comments will resume at the end of the board meeting. We'll take these in the order in which they were received. Mr. Dunham's. Pass. All right, Mr. David Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. That's an attendance. Good afternoon, MARTA Board of Directors. I want to give thanks to our men and women, our members of our amalgamated transit union, who perform loyal and safe and efficient skilled labor every day. One of the complaints that I wanted to bring towards the MARTA Board of Directors is disregard for current provisions that were negotiated last summer in the CBA, specifically speaking to paragraphs thirty-five, one sixteen, and one seventeen. These are financial issues that impact wages of our members within MARTA, and we just have a blatant disregard for those provisions that we have collectively bargained. And also, safety. We continue to have employees here at MARTA attacked on the buses, on the trains, and the stations. We have to do something to get a handle on that. We have attempted to get some resiliency in that area, and we haven't reached it. Also, there has been a narrative in the communities about attendance of our workers here at MARTA. We are here today to refute that. Currently, on that attendance sheet, you have people that have already been terminated from the company, have resigned, but they're still being documented on those attendance rolls. Some are even deceased. And so, what we're hearing out here is that the tennis issue is an issue that's caused by operators and maintenance workers here at MARTA, and we're here to refute that narrative. There's misinformation to the boards in regards to these issues, and we just want you to really investigate these issues. Also, but not lastly, we're in opposition to our goal. We know that this is a process or a program that is about to be rolled out. We asked for information at the senior level meeting that we have between the union and MARTA, and we were denied that information. So, we're here today to say that we're in blatant opposition to that until we can get information that we can pass on to our members and be able to get some type of closure on that. Last portion, the board has approved several contracts that are in direct violation of the CBA. You have went into certain contracts with the contractors that mirror jobs that our workers currently do within MARTA, whether it's heavy cleaning, whether it's pressure washing, whether it's painting, whether it's operation of these vehicles. It was a blatant disrespect to the union. I've been here twenty-three years, and I know others who have been here longer than that, and not until a couple of months ago have we ever seen any buses other than MARTA buses roll into our stations, and you did that with the MTI. The union sat down, and we tried to negotiate with you guys in good faith, but once again, we got pie in our face. So, these are the complaints from the union, and we're going to continue to be here at every board meeting, and we will also be at every board meeting in our communities, Clayton, DeKalb, City of Atlanta, Fulton County, to address these issues with our key people that we elected to office. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James Atkins. He'll pass as well. Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Elaine Brown.
Good afternoon, board. I don't know if my documents can be brought up or not. How do I get that to happen? I sent them, and I would hope that they get to be seen, because what I'm talking about is the Campbellton Road BRT and McPherson redevelopment. We have not had any coordination in design or even planning with the BRT and the MARTA, with BRT and the development at Fort McPherson. Fort McPherson documents are out for their development of regional impact. The DRI document is out, and it does not include anything to allow for the BRT to exist. The BRT needs five lanes. Right now, there are only two lanes, particularly from the back gate to Stanton Road and beyond, but that could be alleviated with the property on Fort Mac. But design needs to happen to take place. How can we get these people together to make that happen? That's number one. And who are the people that need to get together? I've talked with the project managers. They're nice guys, but that's not the place where the decisions take place. So, I'm here to urge you to at least do something to make that attention, pay attention to that.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Normally, we don't comment, but as it relates to your question about the documents, if they've been sent, those will be distributed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elaine Long.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Ms. Long. I'm here again, and I'm here because I haven't seen any changes being done about the situation. The situation is still the same, and it seemed to have gotten worse in other areas that I'm going to bring up today, which is the loud music on the train and the seventy-one Cache K Road being late. And also, I want to bring to the attention that there's no one that is patrolling the train. As you sit, you have to deal with people using profanity, and you have to look at people that half-dressed, and it's just embarrassing. And it makes you feel very uncomfortable. These are things that I think we should try to do something about, because I don't ride the train often. I do have a car, but I had to stop driving because of medical reasons, you know? But the worst of all is to see people sitting out there in the heat, and one of the drivers standing outside, talking on his phone, saying that he's off from work, but his release is not there. And here, all of these people, senior citizens and others, standing there waiting, and he's standing there talking on his phone like, "It's okay. Well, I'm off." This is how he presented himself. "I'm off, and my release haven't gotten here." And I asked him if he could just, you know, maybe work overtime, and, you know, maybe someone would pay him for that, because it was scotch and hot. And I just felt like it was a need for me to be here to say this to you guys. There are people that are older people, like myself. I'm a senior. And to have to sit there in that heat and watch this guy talk on the phone while, you know, all these people are hurting, it made me very angry. I was very angry. And just a few other things I just want to... Maybe they should have more security people, you know, to help us all, and maybe they should have more drivers. But whatever the problem is, it needs to be solved. And my time is up, but thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Keith.
Hi. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Beltline Rail Now Board and many others who are awaiting the results of the MARTA audit. Regardless of what the audit shows, we urge that more MARTA projects funding should continue and that no project should be delayed. As our mayors recently discussed, any delay will only cause costs to rise, and that is something that I think we can all agree we do not want. We look forward to the public engagement phase of the HDR report, and we look forward to seeing what they have given to MARTA on their recommendations that were delivered on June thirtieth. We are excited about the context of the report and suggestions that they have made regarding fixing the existing streetcar and building the Streetcar East Extension. We're all proud and excited about the possibilities of the HDR report. Thank you.
Mr. Kevin Cutliffe.
Hi there. My name is Kevin Cutliffe. I'm a twenty-two-year-old resident of Cobb County. I've come down here once again because I am an actor, so I actively come to Atlanta often to work and use MARTA's services, well, often. So, I was a bit disappointed. Last month, two had taken the one hour thirty bus ride on the Rapid Ten and then from Art Center up to Lindbergh, only for the meeting to be canceled because some board members did not show up. That was a very unfortunate first impression of the MARTA board as a young person. But hopefully, I hope we can continue this dialogue. And one thing I really want to express today is the express. I know that's not MARTA's jurisdiction, but I do have concerns about how it is going to be cut, and I wanted that on public record, and I hope that MARTA can, when it comes to the Atlanta regional meetings, come to bat for their system, brother and sisters. So, I thank you so much for that.
All right. That concludes the public comment portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the June thirteenth, 2024 board meeting minutes? If I can have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The minutes have passed. We'll move now to the board committee reports for both July eighteenth and August eighth. As a point of just procedural, how we'll take those is we'll take all of the July eighteenth at once, and then we'll move to the August eighth. We'll begin with Business Management Committee. Mr. Duratt.
Make sure I've got the right one. Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, June the twentieth, 2024, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for risk management information software as a service, RFP P five zero five five three. B. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of workers' compensation managed care operation, RFP P five zero five four zero. C. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of dental critical illness, group life, accidental death and dismemberment, and supplemental life insurance, RFP P five zero five five four. D. Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for cloud-based learning management system, P four two one five eight. And E. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for MARTA Employee Assistance Program Services, RFP P five zero four zero six. I request approval of these resolutions.
All right. Ask for a motion and for a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The resolutions have passed.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report for July. You want me to go ahead with it? Okay.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, 2024, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the award of a single-source contract for AirLink Mobility Maintenance and Support, RFP P five zero five four nine. B. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the WAN aggregation redesign, switch, and wireless point upgrade, IFBB five zero four eight five. C. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of hardware and software maintenance for Arista switches, IFBB five zero four four five. D. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of MARTA On-the-Go mobile app, RFP P five zero five six five. E. Resolution authorizing the award of a single-source contract for Swifly data platform, RFP P five zero five four seven. F. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of station digital signage for the Transit Rider Information and Passenger Signage Program, RFP P five zero five five nine. And G. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for bus stop e-paper digital arrival screens and installation services for the Transit Rider Information and Passenger Signage Program, RFP P five zero five six zero. I request approval of these resolutions.
All right. Can I have a motion and a second? It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The resolutions pass.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
We'll move to the Planning and Capital Programs Committee report. The Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, June twentieth of 2024, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for MARTA utility locate services, IFBB five zero four four nine. B. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of qualification statements for the procurement of final design services of the Candler Road Arterial Rapid Transit, ART, AEP five zero five five seven. C. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of qualification statements for the procurement of final design services of the Stonecrest Transit Hub, AEP five zero five five eight. I request approval of these resolutions. If we can have a motion and a second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The resolutions pass. The committee also received the following briefing, D. Five Points Transformation Communications and Engagement. That concludes the report from July eighteenth of 2024. Moving now to the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, July twenty-fifth of 2024, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of qualification statements for the procurement of infrastructure, architectural, and engineering consulting services, A slash E, AEP five zero five seven five. B. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of qualification statements for the procurement of systems engineering consulting services, A slash E, AEP five zero five seven six. C. Resolution authorizing the approval of fiscal year 2025 bus, rail, and mobility service standards. I request approval of these resolutions. If I can have a motion and a second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussions? Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The resolutions pass. That concludes my reports. We'll move to the Operations and Safety Committee. Mr. Pahn.
Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, June twentieth, 2024, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the modification of contractual authorization for professional services for transit scheduling and support services, Contract LOL five zero four one five. B. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of professional services for transit scheduling and support services, RFP five zero five six four. I request approval of these resolutions.
We have a motion and a second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I apologize, Ms. Hahn. If you can turn on your microphone.
I just hit the wrong button.
Okay.
If that can be cleared, I move to board.
Seeing no discussion, please vote. The resolutions pass.
The committee also received the following briefing on rail services. Madam Chair, this concludes my report for July the twentieth. Next, if we can move to the next item, which should be, Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, 2024, and approved the following resolutions. A. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract for GPS hardware and software, MARTA fleet, RFP P five zero five five two, utilizing the Federal GSA Services Contract. Resolution B. Authorizing an award of a contract for non-revenue vehicle tires, IFBB five zero four five one. Resolution C. Authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of mobility eligibility and training services, RFP P five zero five seven two. Resolution D. Authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of mobility operations, maintenance, scheduling, and dispatching services, RFP P five zero four zero seven. And Resolution E. Authorizing the modification of supplemental mobility operation and maintenance services, RFP P four three seven zero six. I request approval of these resolutions.
We have a motion and a second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The resolutions pass.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
All right. We'll move to External Relations. Ms. Scott.
Madam Chair, the External Relations Committee met on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, 2024, and received the following briefing, Media Impressions, March through June of 2024. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any other matters to come before the board?
Sorry. We have two matters that came out of executive session. The first one, we would require a motion to approve a settlement of $334,597. The first one, we would require a motion to approve a settlement of $334,597 in the workers' compensation claim of Lois Harris.
Mr. Duratt moves approval. Ms. Hardage seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote by raising your hand. All in favor? Any opposed by the same sign? Any abstentions? All right, it passes.
The second one is also a resolution of a litigation matter. We would require a motion to approve a settlement of $250,000 in the divorce.
Mr. Duratt moves. Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign? Any abstentions? All right, it passes.
I got nothing else.
Any other matters or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, I wonder, I wanted to congratulate Colley on the award for the outstanding, which we did earlier today, but I want to know if there's going to be any kind of formal acknowledgement of that award to the public or whatever. I think MARTA should take advantage of that award, and that everybody in the MARTA area should know about that. So, I'm extremely proud of the work that you all are doing, and having come with a 25-year history of dealing with MARTA. It's a pleasure to see MARTA receiving an award like that, because 20 years ago, I would not have been in favor of getting it, quite honestly, but I'm in favor of this one. So, congratulations to all of you, all of MARTA employees.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Floyd. And yes, absolutely, we, we've held off on, you know, too much public coverage of this. There was a request from APTA to keep the information internal, and the official presentation will happen, as I said, at the end of this month. So, so when that happens, then MARTA will start to roll out a broader campaign of notification to everyone. No, no, no.
That's a shock. Mr. Fryerson.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to recognize that some of the board members attended, the Transit Board members and Transit Administrative Seminar in San Jose, California, in July. Myself, Rita Scott, Valencia Williams, and Segara Jones, we all attended. And for me, in these conferences allows us to learn what other transit agencies that are doing, that are creative and new, and it allows us to also hear how fortunate we are here at MARTA to have such a very well-established transit agency, and what we do and the impact that we deliver to this space. I always learn something. I'm not going there for fun. I go there for, for the business of MARTA, and I just want to make sure you understand that we're going to take back what we've learned, and we're going to use it here in this system to broaden this transit service, this, this system here in Atlanta. But it was, it was worth our trip, and I just wanted the board to know that we appreciate MARTA supporting us to go to these APTA conferences.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fryerson. Mr. McMurray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few points of privilege here. One, I want to thank Shelley Pert, Marcus Allen, and Eric Harris for them coming to the GDOT Board and also the ATL Board to present on the wonderful work they're doing on the 285 BRT study, Planning and Environmental Linkage Study, which is, will be truly transformative. So, a really great job so far, very informative to both of those boards, and I really appreciate them doing such a good job in partnership as we work together to advance mobility for the City of Atlanta. And if you don't believe me, I heard Clark Howard on the radio give a huge shout-out to a little project called 285-400 that you may have heard of for the last four, five, six years, that it was nearing completion, but his advocacy and support of express lanes with BRT. He basically said, "Atlanta has got it together, that these express lanes allow for BRT, and BRT will be successful." So, that was, I was about pulled over, you know? I was, that was a great news, and, you know, so we certainly appreciate Clark Howard's endorsement of what MARTA is doing, and GDOT, and the ATL, and everybody working together for multi-mobility solutions for all users. So, and along that same lines, I'm happy to announce next Thursday, the State Transportation Board intends to award the Best Value Proposer for the State Route 400 Express Lane Project, and that project has many transit components and a lot of long and hard work with MARTA to get to a point that, included in that project, as you recall, a $100 million state GO bond to facilitate and incorporate BRT transit stations and access points along 400. In fact, it funds the access to North Springs MARTA Station, the heavy rail station, builds the major components of a BRT station at Holcomb Bridge Road, one that accesses North Point Mall, and then a express lane access for BRT to the Windward Parking Ride, which is a future TOD location. In addition to that, we assign technical points that are scored in best value, both a technical component and a financial component, for, for basically the future transit in the corridor, which results into a, basically a financial contribution to MARTA as part of the project. So, we're very excited about next Thursday, so stay tuned, and as, I just can't say enough about the partnership with the MARTA and GDOT and the Total Authority and the ATL to pull all this together to get to a good outcome next week. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
And with that, the MARTA Board of Directors meeting is adjourned.